The Monday, November sixth, two thousand twenty-three City of Vandelia meeting is now called to order. We're going to begin with a moment of reflection. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by the Military Order of the Purple Heart as they make their way in.
Detail, one time. Detail. Hoop. That face. Hoop. Ladies and gentlemen, your raised hands, you will now be placed at the ready. Present. Hoop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready? Hoop. Ladies and gentlemen, you may now be. The next part of the program, we're going to mark the conch board out, going to drop the flag and the right hand, and then the right back in. Detail. Right shoulder. Hoop. Clear the flag. Right face. Hoop. At a half step. Forward. Hoop. There. 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 Hadouluu, 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 hadouluu. Detail. Yes, sir. Forward. There. 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 Hadouluu, 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 hadouluu. There. Hadouluu, 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 hadouluu. There. Hadouluu, 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 hadouluu. Detail. One time. Hoop. Detail. Hoop. That face. Hoop. Hooray. Hoop. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this evening's program relative to making the city of Vandelia a Purple Heart City. It is our pleasure as Department of Ohio Military Orders of Purple Hearts Honor Guard. We travel all over the state of Ohio. We've made many Purple Heart cities, villages, parks, towns, townships, unitas. So what that means when you here in Vandelia. Once you actually become a Purple Heart City this evening, it will show America and this city that you are a ever friendly city. Now let me just take this opportunity to introduce the Honor Guard to you. On my right, to my left. Connor Alden, Afghanistan, one Purple Heart. Charlie Toby, Vietnam, one Purple Heart. Quinn West, Vietnam, one Purple Heart. John Looker, Vietnam, three Purple Hearts. On the end, Tom Aidenbro, ninety-sixth Marine, Vietnam, three Purple Hearts. My name is Jerry Kirk, Vietnam, three Purple Hearts. So it is our pleasure to be here with you today. How many veterans do we have in the audience today? We want to say thank you for your service. And all of us served in Vietnam. Y'all remember that day, those years. When we came home, there was no welcome. There was no thank you for your service. There was no thank you for that. But things have changed now, and we are on a mission to make sure that all of our veterans, both here and those that come in from the war, are never forgotten. Mr. Mayor? If you have a question, may I?
Whereas the City of Vandelia, Ohio, and our entire community have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have and are selflessly serving their country and this community and the armed forces.
Whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration given to those who are injured or killed protecting the United States in combat, being first awarded by the General George Washington in seventeen eighty-two and...
Whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veterans and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiative, and most importantly, make sure that we do not forget. And?
Whereas the City of Vandelia, Ohio appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. And?
Whereas the City of Vandelia, Ohio will now be on the Purple Heart Trail that originate in Mount Vernon, Virginia, and traverses the United States to California and...
Whereas the City of Vandelia, Ohio most reverently acknowledges and welcomes this profound honor.
Now therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim the City of Vandelia, Ohio to be recognized as a Purple Heart City and encourage the citizens of the City of Vandelia to show their appreciation for the sacrifices of the Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage and to show them the honor and support they've earned. Thank you.
You know, it makes us proud for us to be able to do these types of ceremonies, to meet new people, to see that you care. On this day, November sixth, two thousand twenty-three, we were in combat over fifty years ago, but we're still here with a mission to make towards work and our doctrine. I will clap here to present the Mayor and to the City of Vandelia. This plaque, we desolate. The Military Order of the Purple Heart, special recognition award bestowed with pride to the City of Vandelia, Ohio, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans becoming a Purple Heart City. It was presented by Patriot members of the Department of Ohio Military Order of the Purple Heart. At this point, at seven fifteen, I hereby declare that the City of Vandelia is now a Purple Heart City. Give yourself around. And thank you very much for your participation and being out here to support us. We have another tradition that we do as an Honor Guard, and now we're getting ready to exercise that tradition. Detail. About. Present. Coin. Anybody know the tradition about sound this coin? Here is our Purple Heart. It is a message that serves.
Thank you. The camaraderie, the unity, the closeness that we have when we were in combat.
It is our way of showing and representing the fact that we were proud. When we raised our right hand in order to defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, both foreign and domestic, we lived up to that. A lot of us did not come home. So we present these coins to other veterans. And also it accelerates the feeling of the camaraderie and the hope. And I hereby present this coin to the Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
You're all welcome, sir. Thank you. Now, a lot of times when we do these, we usually have a photo opportunity because we look so good. So if anybody wants to come up and have a photo op with us, we'll be there because we would love to get all of the council members down with a group picture. Council come down and we'll stand behind.
Yes.
Guys, we're getting over that wing. Come on down off of the wing. All of us. Well, listen, the rain will be here.
And that's why, Mayor, we'll put you right there in the center. Dave, you're gonna have to scooch. There you go. Not higher, just let it just work with the light. Sir, we could get, we have a little gap here.
Oh, okay.
I just want to make sure we can see everybody. They're happy.
Thank you. All right, are there any other? I just saw you, that person, Purple Heart recipient?
Yes, sir.
Vietnam?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other Purple Heart recipients in the audience, sir? Well, all you military veterans, again, we have to do a little thanks. Not only you, but the family that endured the sacrifice when you were in. We thank you for your willingness to serve and the sacrifices you may have endured while you were in. Thank you, and God bless. Detail. Attention.
Sir.
Do we get a picture with our staff with us?
Absolutely.
So if all the staff can come up?
I would also like to invite our veterans, all of these employees for the City of Vandelia, all of our veterans, from each of the departments that are here this evening, including myself. So I'd like to also give them a round of applause for volunteering.
All right, City of Vandelia employees, go ahead and get up here. Thank you very much.
And all you first responders, thank you so much for what you do. Superbide.
Army?
Oh, yeah.
Matt, you were Army? Army.
My pleasure.
Yep.
Oh, you still?
Wait, wait, we gotta wait until one strike. All right. If you cannot see this camera, this camera cannot see you. Like, there you, there you go.
Counsel hide behind me.
She, you just go a little bit, there you go. If that should work, I'll take a few. Thank you so much.
All right.
All the people were leaving for Vietnam, getting drafted when I was in high school. It was a tough time.
I figured you just lived through.
And you, young man, for about... For about falling on your ass. Good job, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Well, that ain't what I did that for, I did that...
No, I was coming to get, I was coming to get you.
Thanks again, ladies and gentlemen. We really appreciate it. It was a pleasure being here this evening with you all. God bless you. Stay strong and stay safe. Detail. Attention. Right face. Hoop. At a half step. Forward. Hoop. There. 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 Hadouluu, 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 hadouluu. Now, one more thing, everyone. Never forget that, that something special is on hand. Only here will know what I'm talking about. Ladies and gentlemen, by the act of hand, recognition, our fallen. Detail. Attention. Present. Hoop.
All right, continuing on with our communications petitions and awards. Next, we have the Medal of Valor for Police Officer Nelson Climber and Police Officer Connor Matlock. Mr. Wend?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'll go ahead and I'll defer to Chief Oldhouse to lead the processions.
Thank you, Mr. Wend. Thank you, Your Honor, and all counsel. I would like to start by asking Officer Connor Matlock and Officer Nelson Climber to step forward as I read the details of this incident, and I'll be joined by Lieutenant Suker and Lieutenant Walker, who will be presenting them with their medals and their plaques tonight. Just to give you a little history, the Medal of Valor has been, is an honor bestowed upon those employees within the Division of Police who have rendered service where they've put themselves in a life-threatening situation in order to save and protect the lives of the citizens of Vandelia. And these two officers did a fine job on that on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And I'll just write, read a little synopsis here. On May thirteenth of this year, Officer Connor Matlock and Officer Nelson Climber responded to one eleven Imperial Court on a structure fire at an apartment building. They arrived and found an active fire in apartment number one. Officer Matlock, who arrived first, made entry into the apartment, which he found was filled with smoke and discovered an oxygen tank on fire. He located a sixty-two-year-old unresponsive male resident seated in a chair in the living room. He immediately removed the male from his recliner and began pulling him away from the nearby fire and out the door of the apartment. Officer Climber arrived a short time later and assisted him in pulling the male resident away from the apartment building and away from the fire to safety. We're going to watch a brief body cam footage of that situation as it unfolded.
Yeah, it's on, it's on fire. Oxygen tank blew up. Come on, come on. Is there anybody else in there?
Go, 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 go.
Oxygen in there. Hey, get everybody out.
As you'll see, both of those officers put their lives at risk. There were other oxygen tanks within that apartment building that were at risk of exploding and could have put themselves extreme harm and also the resident that was there. After removing that resident from the fire and the fire department responding to render life methods to order to help that resident, Officer Matlock and Officer Climber ran back inside the building and began alerting other residents and searching other apartments for anyone else remaining in the building. They had to force entry into two different apartments that were locked and searched them to make sure everyone was out of the building that was on fire. By doing this, both of these officers demonstrated bravery and courage, putting their own lives at risk by running into an apartment building that was on fire, rescuing a resident, pulling them out to safety, and then returning to the building to evacuate anyone else still inside the building. They took immediate action in a life-threatening situation, and their bravery and exceptional service ultimately saved the life of a Vandelia resident who was inside the burning apartment. Tonight, we're honored to give both of these officers, Officer Connor Matlock and Officer Nelson Climber, the Medal of Valor, the highest honor that can be bestowed upon any employee of the Division of Police, and recognize them for their exceptional service. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So up next, we'll be giving a really good presentation of National Road Traffic Counts by City Engineer Ben Borton, and I know... And I know you all want to hang out for that, but we won't, we won't be offended if you have to get up and go.
All right. All right, moving on, the much anticipated presentation of the National Road Traffic Counts. Somebody grab those doors.
Good evening. I anticipate this to be the makings of next blockbuster, so I'm expecting you guys to be riveted. Being honest, we've been through this before. So, objectives of the traffic study is basically just to quantify all traffic versus truck traffic. That's really articulated trucks, but for the short, for this presentation, just going to call them trucks to make it easier. We're doing periodic checks as, to see how our implementations of signage and changes are affecting the traffic flow as long with as more warehouses and economic development come online. The major initiatives, like we discussed before, we're working on the Northeast DIA Logistics Access Project. Most people know that as the Ring Road Project. This is just our section that we're working on with Montgomery County, which is widening Lightner and Dixie and to facilitate trucks to continue on to Northwoods to the highway. We've gotten numerous grants, as you can see, from federal and from state level. We've also worked on the Northwoods Boulevard and I seventy-five southbound signal. That award for that work has been out. The contractor should be working there anytime now. They're currently work, waiting on getting materials before they start. ODOT is actually running that one, and we did receive ODOT funding from that. We also have these traffic towns, as I'll be kind of talking on, the latest one. We've had speed limit changes. Notable ones are Airport Access, used to be fifty-five mile an hour, now it's up to sixty-five. Downtown has been restricted down to twenty-five mile per hour from thirty-five. And then we've extended thirty-five mile per hour past the car lots out to Dix, out to Peters Pike. That's kind of all stems from helping with algorithms for like Google Maps to try and encourage trucks to go, take seventy, seventy-five, take Airport Access to go around instead of going through town. We have no parking signage that we have done. On National Road, the interstate ramps and on Worldwide Place and Corporate Center Drives, we've improved signage on the interstates to try and keep trucks to go around instead of going through town. The police department has been doing enforcements and training on commercial vehicle enforcement, and they've had special duties and hours they're working on managing that. Along with, they've been enforcing a ordinance that we've had on the books for years that's, while going through the downtown area, the trucks are supposed to stay in the right-hand lane. As you've now seen, in the downtown area, we have signage actually noting that ordinance, and they've been enforcing it. We've also been improving relations with Ohio State Highway Patrol, ODOT, and other stakeholders, along with elected officials, county officials, and other state representatives and administrative departments. This slide has changed slightly from the last time we had the presentation, noting the ones, the upcoming initiatives that we've been working on and that we've completed. One of the big ones was the no right turn from Capstone Way and Fieldstone Way onto Peters Pike. So they have to turn left to go up towards the airport. And then when they get up towards the airport, they have to turn left again to go back towards the Airport Access instead of right onto National and through the downtown. We've also done the truck prohibitions on Stone Quarry and Helkey for through trucks to try and also with that, making sure they're not trying to find another way around and through the town. Parking prohibitions, we've been working on, we've completed the one on Schultz Drive and Industrial Park, which is for no parking after nine PM until five AM to try and keep trucks from parking overnight in that area. We're in the process of working on signing Capstone Way. Those signs will be up in the next couple of weeks, most likely. And then the next step is to working at Fieldstone Way, which hasn't been an issue yet, but just trying to get ahead of it. Other ones that we've been working on is the National Road Truck Prohibition. I know Dan's been working a lot with state legislators and the Senator's Office to try and get that for no truck prohibition from Airport Access Road to Ranch View. And another one is the Safety Study and Road Diet on National Road, which is currently tabled. Going into what's a truck, this is the same criteria that we had in the last presentation. It's an industry standard from seven AM to seven PM. If you see the graphic there, it's kind of the easiest thing to look at it. It's the Federal Highways Classification of an eight through thirteen, the highest classification I have. It's primarily, it has to be articulated. If you look at it, there's exceptions to trucks and cars pulling campers. It doesn't classify those, but basically everything else that's articulated where it has a front cab and a separate trailer on the back is classified as a truck for this. Our study intersections are the same we did before. They're Airport Access Road, the southbound ramps, the northbound ramp, Peters Pike, and Dixie Drive. The Airport Access Road, the southbound ramp, just looking at that intersection, truck traffic is still primarily heading to and from the west to Airport, to the Union Air Park Boulevard. Most eastbound truck traffic is turning on to Airport Access from the Union Park, Union Air Park area. This time, it was seventy-eight percent. The last two other counts we have done, they've been right about eighty percent, so it's still about the same. A notable difference we did have is thirty-two less trucks per day entering westbound, so that would be entering from the bridge over Airport Access. That's about a seven percent increase from previous studies. Next slide here. I didn't do all the same slides we had last time because I didn't want to keep going on that, so I eliminated mainly just two slides showing the data. So here is just the trucks going into the intersection. So, if you're looking at the picture there, it kind of helps. So, looking on the left side of the slide, you had three hundred and eighty-six trucks coming into the intersection and three hundred and seventy-nine leaving the intersection, heading westbound, average per day. Of the three hundred and eighty-six coming in, three hundred or seventy-eight percent are turning right and going on to Airport Access, which is a good sign. That's what we want. Eighty-three are still continuing on. Other ones I have on here that are, have like a box around them, I'll be showing in a couple of slides here, I'll be showing a graph of how that one has changed. Notably, as you can see, there's a hundred and ten trucks turning left onto Airport Access. The three hundred and seventy-three, three hundred and seventy-seven, sorry, continuing through over to Union Air Park with the combined total there of four hundred and eighty-seven. Next slide. So, here is the other slide I'm going to be having on all the intersections, which is just the trucks divided by total traffic. So you can see what the percentage of the traffic, our trucks going through the area. Nothing really notable changed, so that's why I don't have any box on this one. It honestly stayed pretty even with the last two studies for the percentage of number of trucks versus total number of cars. You have basically twelve percent of the traffic is turning right onto the southbound ramp from Union Air Park. And then coming from the other direction, you have ten percent are turning, of, ten percent of vehicles are turning left onto the southbound ramp coming from the bridge. So next slide here, it kind of shows the graphs. If you look up in the top right-hand corner, the large triangle there is kind of the westbound traffic. It's just a little bit off there, but. And then you have the left turn and the straight-through traffic. So, the westbound traffic there was four, four hundred and fifty-five trucks in December, and it stayed surprisingly exactly the same in May, four hundred and fifty-five trucks. And then it did increase up to four hundred and eighty-seven, which is the thirty-two trucks per day that I mentioned on the previous slide. For the straight, continuing through to Union Air Park, it went up twenty trucks there from the last one in May was three hundred and fifty-seven trucks to three seventy-seven. And then the left-hand turn from the last time was eighty-nine trucks, which was staying about even up to a hundred and ten, which is twelve more trucks per day turning onto the Airport Access ramp. Before I continue on to the next one, do you have any questions at this intersection? Because I know I was calling numbers.
Ben, so as I, as I interpret that, I look at that and I say, trucks that are going westbound from the city of Van Dalia towards the Airport Access Road and are turning onto the Airport Access Road, that number has gone up.
Yes.
So, and it's likely that that is the result of the turning prohibitions of the trucks and trailers that are over fifty feet and the turning prohibitions at Capstone and Fieldstone?
Yes. When we get into later slides, I'll actually be mentioning about that. So moving on to the northbound ramp, as we didn't put it on the slide here, but as we've mentioned from the previous presentation, the northbound ramp, we actually did not use a count, but you, we interpolated from, we know the southbound ramp, and then we know Peters Pike, and we're assuming no trucks are turning at that intersection to go up to the airport. That we can basically figure out what's coming from the access road. The truck traffic here is still primarily heading to the west. The notable differences are the same thirty-two trucks I mentioned in the previous slide at the southbound ramp that was increased coming across the bridge there. Those same thirty-two trucks are actually coming from the ramp itself. Eighty-one less trucks are turning right from the ramp and heading towards Peters, which is an eighty-one percent reduction. Seventy-five less trucks are traveling east from that intersection, so from the through trucks and from the trucks turning right, that was forty percent reduction actually heading towards the city. Next slide. So, the star shows the assumption the zero trucks are turning to the airport. Once again, the main ones of note here are the ones I kind of have a box that I'll be showing a graph on. There were a large change. With the increased trucks heading to the west, you have three hundred and eighteen heading that way, which of the trucks turning right or left, the percentage there, as you can see, adds up to a hundred because it's whichever direction they go. Ninety-four percent now are actually heading out to the air park, which is a good sign. And we only have a hundred and eleven heading towards town at this intersection. Percentages here, once again, most of them stayed pretty the same. Even the, basically twenty-one percent of vehicles turning left are trucks heading out west. That was honestly still about the same for the same number of vehicles. So it's basically showing that there's a little more trucks, but there's actually slightly less traffic, or traffic is also increasing number of vehicles, and that's why the percentage is still the same. Moving on to the next slide. So the left-hand turn here is where you have the thirty-two truck increase from two eighty, two eighty-six to three eighteen, which then the percentages there was seventy-four percent, basically, and now it's up to ninety-four percent. That's about that twenty percent increase. Not the same twenty percent that was on the previous slide. There's a lot of twenty percents in this close stuff. But one thing of note is that the increase on this for turning left is actually a good thing because it shows, once again, more trucks are heading to the west, not into town, which is what we're trying to get. And it basically shows that the area is developing out there and that the trucks are following the regional development plan to deal with the tra, the increased traffic, which is the whole point of continuing the Ring Road Project and trying to get traffic to go around and to avoid our city. Next slide. So here is the right turn and then all of the trucks heading towards Peters. So the first graph is actually all the trucks heading towards Peters. So it went from one eighty-six down to one eleven, which is a seventy-five, that's the seventy-five less trucks. The right turn specifically was up pretty much right at a hundred and is down to nineteen, which is an eighty-one truck drop, which then has that correlating percentage here is the same twenty percent change for the right turn because we had twenty percent crease, increase on the left turn on the previous slide. Are there any questions at the northbound ramp? Okay. Continuing on Peters Pike, here we have a little more dialogue. I know everyone's always waiting for the end there, you're waiting for the, for the Dixie one, but Peters still has some important information. At Peters, one thing that is very different about this count we did this time was that the truck traffic going to and from Stone Quarry crossings was not balanced. So by a hundred trucks going in, we didn't have a hundred trucks going out, so it's a little weird. I did speak with Carter Express about that after we got the numbers back to try and figure out, because they're, they're the main trucking person coming out of Stone, Stone Quarry crossings, and their docks have a, two shifts, but the trucks, the contract drivers run twenty-four hours. So, as, what it seemed in this last time we took count is that a lot of trucks are coming in before seven AM to be ready for the shift, to get in there, to unload them so they can get out. So, once again, we're following the industry standard of seven AM to seven PM, which is when most people are going to be out and about. So that's why the data is going to seem a little funky when we get to this next slide. Other notable changes is that right turn that we're not, that trucks are not allowed to do, seventeen less trucks per day. We're taking that, it's a seventy-one percent reduction, so that means seventy-one percent more trucks are following the signage, the new signage we just put up. An average reduction of twenty-two less trucks on the east side of the intersection. So this would be between Peters and, or from leaving the Peters intersection, heading towards Dixie, there is an average of twenty-two less trucks going either direction there. Want to go to the next slide? So here's the data for that. So we had thirty-three trucks turning right onto Peters, where we had a hundred and four turning left out of Peters. That's that imbalance I was telling you about that doesn't really make sense until I kind of talked with one of the employers in the area. The right turn is down to seven, averaged to seven trucks per day. Ideally, we're trying to get that to zero because it is, they're not allowed to turn right, but as you know, with more enforcement and educating of the drivers, more will follow. Another one I'm note on here is that eighty-three trucks were heading in and eighty-four were going out. I'll show you how that's dropped from the last time we did this study. One other, one other thing of note on that slide, though, is back at the southbound ramp, there was a hundred and ten trucks turning left onto the southbound. there was 110 trucks turning left onto the southbound ramp. As you see here, 104 of those are actually coming from the Stonecory Crossings. And those means those trucks are not going through town, which is a plus. On the next slide, um, the ones mainly of note here is I'm gonna show with the reduction of trucks east of the intersection, there's a lower percentage that follows with that. Um, 8% of the trucks, 8% of vehicles are trucks that are turning left to head back to airport access, the only other thing. But most of these other percentages stayed still pretty close to being the same as the last time. So did not have more slides. I tried to kinda put these together so you can see apples to apples next to each other. So the purple, which correlates up in the right-hand corner there, the purple and the blue is the same as the purple and blue in the graphs. So the purple is the eastbound, the blue is the westbound. Um, so going on the purple there, it was 106, then it was 110, and now it's dropped down to 84. So that is a 26 less trucks than the last time going eastbound. And it was 91 in December, then 101, and then it's dropped down to 83, which is 18 less trucks than the last time. And the correlating percentages there, as you can see, the trend is slowly going down, which is what we wanna see. We're now down from two, around 2%, we're now down to pretty close to 1 and 1/2% of the average of two, which is a good, good sign. Uh, turning right here, um, once again, in December and May, there was, the signage didn't go up until July, which is why I kinda have that gradient of the red there, cause uh, beginning of July is about when we put those signs up that they can't turn right. As you see, they did drop, which is good. People can read signs, it's awesome. Um, but also just, just figuring out their route, not just following the GPS, actually looking at everything around them. Um, that did drop 17 trucks there. And then the right turn from being 26% of trucks coming into the intersection, turn right, it went down to 19%. And now we're only at 6% of the trucks at that intersection are turning right instead of turning left, um, which is good. Any questions here at Peters intersection? I know the data is a little weird because of that imbalance, but it is what it is. Can't change the numbers. Um, Dixie and National, once again, trucks are primarily heading east-west following US 40. Notable change here is an average reduction of 14 trucks per day at this intersection. So that's going in from either direction and leaving from either direction. It's about 14 less trucks, which is good, just a 15% reduction. Uh, percentage of trucks versus the overall vehicles heading east through the downtown has actually dropped to under 1%, which is good. That's what we're shooting for. Um, here are the actual numbers for that intersection. So main ones of note here, like I said, most of the percentages and the numbers are pretty similar, except for continuing through, basically. The, um, east intersection and west intersection, the numbers are down, which I'll show you in the next graphs. Um, which then the next, um, if you wanna continue, the next one here is the percentages. Once again, since we have a lot of traffic going through there, the percentages are on the lower end, which is what we wanna see, um, more vehicles than trucks. So, once again, I use kinda the same scheme here. The purple is eastbound and the blue is westbound. And this is just the traffic on the west side of the intersection, so coming in and leaving, going towards Dixie and coming from, sorry, to, going to Peters and coming from Peters. Um, truck traffic, as you see, is slowly going down. It was 109 in December, 103, now we're at 86. So that's 17 less trucks than we were back in May. Um, same thing kinda going for the westbound. It was staying pretty much even at 92, 93. And then it went down to the 82, which is 11 less trucks than the last time. Um, and you can see the percentages there, they were pretty much about 1.3, 1.4% of the vehicles were trucks. It's now down to 1.1-ish. Um, another one of note on here is back at the Peters. Um, there was 17 west trucks turning right from Peters because of that signage. We actually see that here is exactly seven west trucks are coming into the intersec, sorry, 17 west trucks are coming into the intersection. It's the exact same number. So it's showing that the trucks that we did get to turn, you can see that here that it's continuing through on National. Now this is on the east side of the intersection. Um, coming through there, it stayed pretty much even for the last two, and then it has slowly dropped some, mainly more on the eastbound going through downtown than the westbound. Uh, the eastbound then dropped 21 trucks from 95 to 74. And then the coming from 75 going through, it dropped a little bit, but not as much as only six trucks at that, going that direction. And as you see here, the percentages have been going down and the one I noted before is we're now just slightly under 1% for the eastbound traffic. Um, next slide here, since the last presentation, there was a lot of discussion on if you just sat in one spot, pretty much in the downtown area, how often you would see a truck. Uh, I threw this slide in specifically for this intersection and for that section. So it pretty much, it's, uh, changed slightly between December and May. As you see there, it was, um, sorry, step, one, one step back. The two color lines are the same colors as before, the east and west. The black below is if you averaged those two numbers, that's where it would be averaged and divided by two, because if you sat, you'd see one truck coming from the west or you'd see one truck coming from the right. Um, it would be, it'd be basically those two numbers averaged and divided by two. So I'm gonna kinda just, kinda speak to those numbers a little bit. So they were pretty much both averaged about seven minutes, it's seven and a half, we had talked about on the last presentation. As you see there, the eastbound truck is actually up to nine minutes and 41 seconds if you sat on average, that'd be heading eastbound. And the westbound is at eight minutes and nine seconds, which that averages down from being about every three minutes and 40 seconds that you see a truck going either direction to it now being four minutes and 27 seconds. I know that doesn't seem like a, a big change, but when you're talking about a lot of trucks and a lot of traffic through an area, the increase may not seem substantial, but it, it is noticeable, as you see in the numbers. Um, another thing to mention on here is that, once again, this is another one of the graphs. There's not many graphs in here that when the graph goes up, it's a good thing, but this is basically the average time you're seeing a truck in the downtown area is going up. So I mean, there's more time between a truck, which is a good sign to have. Are there any other questions at this intersection or any other intersections?
Looks like it's trending in the right direction.
Yep, just what we wanna see. So I'm sure we'll see this coming out with a Michael Bay, it'll be a lot of explosions going with this, but uh, try to, try to be, uh, happy when you see it, you know? I know you've already got the Cliff Notes version, but thank you.
Thanks, Ben. I think that last slide really speaks to, uh, what we've been looking at, is that perception of how many trucks per minute go through town. And, and as we said, that's trending in the right direction. It's great to see that.
Again, thank you for the detailed report there. Appreciate that. All right, we're gonna move on to approval of minutes. We've got the study session minutes of October 2nd, the council meeting minutes of October 2nd, the council budget workshop minutes of October 12th, study session minutes of October 16th, the council meeting minutes of October 16th. Are there any comments or questions? Being none, they stand approved. We have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and your comment. All right. We'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Went, we have some information items?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, Ms. Swar, Ms. Swartz has put up an event flyer up on the dais here, and uh, there's a Veterans Day special at the rec center. There will be free admission on November 11th, um, for, uh, for veterans and their families to the rec center. And so that is here also, there will be a Veterans Day service, um, Saturday, November 11th at 11:00 AM at the sports complex at the Veterans Memorial there within the sports complex. Uh, I'd like to wish everybody an almost happy election day. Uh, of course, our polling places are open 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. Um, and there's information on the Board of Elections website. Leaf collection ends on, uh, December 5th. And so we've got our schedule out there on the website. And finally, city offices will be closed Thursday, November 23rd and Friday, November 24th in observance of Thanksgiving. The rec center will be open on Thanksgiving from 7:00 AM until noon for the fitness area, gym and track. The rec center will resume regular hours and schedule on Friday, November 24th.
All right, we have no, uh, action items or old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 23-R-70. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution approving the Webster Street plat.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
This city initiated subdivision application, seeks to combine seven city-owned parcels located on Webster Street, approximately 500 feet south of Park Center Drive, into two new parcels totaling 72.628 acres. On June 13th, 2023, Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the proposed record plan. Final action has been held pending the resolution of a city-initiated rezoning of the property.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-70 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 23-R-70 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-71.
A resolution approving the LBD Enterprises plat.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the applicant on behalf of LBD Enterprises LLC has submitted an application requesting subdivision approval for LBD Enterprises plat. The property is located between Langford Drive and Mulberry Road. The Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Resolution 23-R-71 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 23-R-71 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-72.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Dayton Power and Light, also known as AES Ohio, for the purpose of providing a utility easement for utility pole replacement and electric line work on property co-owned by the city of Huber Heights, Vandelia and Tip City for use by the Tri-Cities North Regional Wastewater Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
This is in relation to a parcel that is owned by Tri-Cities Wastewater Authority. Uh, all three cities must pass this legislation in order to sign the easement. And so we are requesting approval of the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign, um, the easement on behalf of the city so that AES can complete the replacement of poles and transmission lines.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 23-R-72 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Resolution 23-R-72 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Lastly, we have Resolution 23-R-73.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive the formal bidding and enter into an agreement for installation of two water valves on the city's 16-inch water main.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Director Cron gave a presentation about this earlier this evening, and we appreciate the consideration, um, by the council for this, given the long lead times. This is for water valves, one being on the side of, uh, that, for a trunk section that runs under 75. Um, I'm recommending that we waive formal bidding, uh, because this is specialty work and enter into an agreement with Range Line Tapping Services to install the two 16-inch water valves at their submitted price of $33,000 apiece for a total of $66,000.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-73 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Resolution 23-R-73 as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. It brings us to ordinances in their first reading, the first one being ordinance 23-29. And council discussed tabling that mo, tabling that ordinance to sometime in the future during our study session. So if I can have a motion to table?
Yes, Your Honor, in light of the information earlier presented in the workshop, I'll motion to table this ordinance 29, 23-29 reading until December 4th.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Farce to table ordinance 23-29 till our December 4th meeting. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have ordinance 23-30.
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolution as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, provided for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the ordinance approves the editing and inclusion of certain or, ordinances and resolutions that have been passed by council. This is done as a matter of housekeeping.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 23-30, first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve ordinance 23-30 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Uh, next, we have ordinances in their second reading, the first one being ordinance 23-26.
An ordinance rezoning 126.334 acres of publicly-owned land and mending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
This city-initiated rezoning involves 19 parcels totaling just over 126 acres, located in the following locations, 810 Northwoods Boulevard, 815 Foley, Webster Street, approximately 500 feet south of Park Center Boulevard, the intersection of Old Springfield and Old Canal Roads, and the southeast end of Johnson Station Road. As proposed, the subject properties would be rezoned from agriculture, residential single-family three, gateway business, highway business, office industrial park, and industrial to public facilities and office industrial park zoning districts. On September 26th, the Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning.
Thank you. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve ordinance 23-26 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve ordinance 23-26 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have ordinance 23-27.
An ordinance approving court auth- excuse me, an ordinance approving court authorized assessments against various parcels and directing the finance director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The city obtained nuisance abatement orders from the court for two parcels, 6325 Shady Knoll Drive and 841 Spartan. The structures on the parcels were then raised by the city pursuant to the court order. As the cost to raise the nuisance structures have not been paid, this ordinance is necessary for the city to assess the cost of to the property owners and have the county auditor place the amounts due upon the tax list and duplicates.
All right, thank you, and since this is a ordinance in its second reading, again, we'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment, please come to the podium or microphone, state your name and address for the record and your comment.
Good evening again. I'm Rob Cron. I'm the Public Service Director for Vandelia, and I'm here and I'm aware of the facts and circumstances regarding the proposed assessments for 6325 Shady Knoll Drive and 80- 841 Spartan Avenue, and I hereby attest that the statements I'm about to make are true and accurate to the best of my knowledge. So first, the city did obtain a court ruling declaring 6325 Shady Knoll Drive a public nuisance and a court ruling declaring 841 Spartan Avenue a public nuisance and ordering the structures on each parcel to be torn down at the cost of the respective property owners. The city demolished both structures earlier this year. The city incurred costs related to the demolition of these structures in asbestos surveys, asbestos abatement, proper EPA fees, and then demolition costs and restoration of the lots. The amount incurred by the city to secure and demolish the structures on these properties is correctly stated in the assessment ordinance that you have in front of you tonight. The amount incurred, the amount incurred was paid by the city, and we have copies of all of those invoices and paid receipts or canceled checks for the the fees that were paid. Both property owners were sent notice of the abatement cost, and neither property owner has paid or made arrangements to pay such costs.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 23-27 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve ordinance 23-27 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have an emergency ordinance, that being emergency ordinance 23-28.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Vandelia, Ohio during calendar year ending December 31, 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. During the first reading, I gave approximately nine minutes of testimony regarding the budget and the process that the city went through. I'll also note, kind of as a joke, that I also was not the longest testimony that night. Vice Mayor, it was good. The, and so we've put substantial work into this budget. We've done our due diligence in this, and in the update that I gave you last week, I noted and provided an update that was similar to what was in the first reading, and so i- if it's okay with you, I'll, I won't read that nine minutes of testimony, and I'll just let that first one stand.
Is that okay with council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and since this is a emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and your comments. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 23-28 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Folick to approve ordinance 23-28 as an emergency. Are there any comments?
I want to make one. We all, we made comments last week, and I'm not going to repeat those, but, and I'm going to say this because I hope it doesn't happen again next year, but I felt like this budget process was probably the most orchestrated budget that I've ever been through, in that I don't, looking back, appreciate the fact that some of our members weren't, weren't able to be there. The timeline was different than normal, though we did have plenty of time to go through that, and I would have wished that all our members would have been accommodated to be at those meetings. I think it's terribly important that, that it didn't work out that way. Also, the presentations to us, I feel like were presented in a way that certain people were going to, receiving from what they wanted out of the budget and as opposed, and I've never felt that before through this process. So I hope it doesn't repeat again next year, and this was such a serious budget and such an extensive budget, and what we're looking at in the future is, is extensive borrowing that I guess I wish we would have done it a little bit differently. Thank you.
I will provide the comment that earlier this year, I was contacted by Mayor Herbst who requested me to set dates in advance for the budget, in that those dates were set to accommodate Mayor Herbst in his schedule so that he could participate, and so that's why that occurred.
And I think you did send out a, a survey to get everyone's?
Yes, I did.
Dates? All right. Any other comments?
I'll, I'm just going to respond to that comment because I find that, and Councilwoman Farce is entitled to her opinion, but I find that to be very offensive to staff.
Yeah.
I would actually make the argument that in my four years on council and on the two years prior to me being on council that I participated in budget workshops or were present for budget workshops, this was the most involved process that we have ever had. We had four budget workshops, two of which were added because of council's requests and, and suggestions. And my feeling would be is if you have those concerns with staff or the way things are being done, then those should be brought up during workshops and not in the second reading of the ordinance for adoption.
And that is your opinion, and I do not mean any insults of staff. They worked very hard on that.
Well, when you make the comment that it's orchestrated, I think that's offended, offensive, but that's my opinion.
I agree.
I agree.
It wasn't, it wasn't a positive word. I agree.
All right, any other comments? And I'll stand with my comments from the last meeting. I'm very conservative by nature, and I don't have a problem with the spend down to get to our proper percentages. My biggest concern is with some of the costs that we're going to be adding, how sustainable is that going to be going into the future? And I appreciate Vice Mayor Lewis's comments last meeting where he did bring up a good point, that if our revenue is not tracking at what it's projected, we still have the ability to stop the additional spending. So there is a, a safeguard there in place. Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce?
No.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
No, in the past, the motion passes 5-2. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions where we have a variance for accessory structure at 1340 South Dixie. Mr. Went?
The applicant, William Jackson, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a detached garage that would cause the total area of all accessory structures to exceed 40% of the principal building footprint, a 326-foot, square foot maximum for the property located at 1340 South Dixie Drive. The applicant has proposed adding a 1,200 square foot detached garage to the side yard of his property. There is an existing 64 square foot shed. On October 11th, 2023, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted three to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance for BZA 2311 at total accessory structure area at 1340 South Dixie Drive as recommended.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve the variance from the BZA of 23-11 in the total accessory structure area at 1340 South Dixie Drive. Any additional comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have a variance for a total accessory structure at O'Hara Court.
The applicant, Cole Ward, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a detached garage that would cause the total area of all accessory structures to exceed 600 square feet for the property located at 570 O'Hara Court. The applicant has proposed adding a 676 square foot detached garage to the rear of his property. There is an existing 192 square foot shed. On October 11th, 2023, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted three to zero to recommend approval with one condition, and that condition is the two properties shall be consolidated into one lot prior to the issuance of any building permits.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the variance BZA 2312, total accessory structure for 570 O'Hara Court with the one condition.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve the variance, the BZA 23-12, the total accessory structure area at 570 O'Hara Court with the one condition attached. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have the Vandelia Records Commission meeting minutes of April 28th, the Vandelia Arts Council meeting minutes of September 19th, the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting minutes of October 11th. Are there any comments? That brings us to council comments. We'll begin with Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would respectfully request an executive session to discuss certain personnel matters, including the performance of a public employee.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Woods?
Yes, I just want to say I had the distinct pleasure to not only nominate but introduce our esteemed city manager as Business Professional of the Year at the Chamber Awards Ceremony, and just want to say again that congratulations.
Thank you. Councilman Blakesley?
I'll echo that, and also, it's beyond words that what we witnessed tonight, becoming a Purple Heart City, makes me very, very proud and honored. Got choked up, I'm sure many people did. Of course, I'll be singing that cadence all night now in my head and possibly my dreams, but, you know, really appreciate all the veterans that served our country to protect our freedoms that allow us to be here tonight. You know, I think it really hit home, and to honor those of the city that helped protect us. And I want to acknowledge and recognize staff especially, Mrs. Schwartz, for helping arrange all that. I'm sure that was no easy task. And then continuing on, and I'm sure everyone will agree, that Officer Kleimer and Officer Matlock should be, and was nicely commended for their bravery, and again, just very, very proud of the caliber of employees that we have that go above and beyond, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Folick?
Just to echo Councilman Blakesley's remarks on the valor awards, and then also Ms. Schwartz's work towards the Purple Heart designation. I know she's been at it for a while, so thank you for your, your work on that. And also, just wanted to congratulate Captain Mike Pinson, who just recently retired from the Division of Fire as a part-time captain with over 32 years of his service to our community. So congratulations to him and best wishes in his retirement, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Farce?
Just to echo what's been said, it was nice to have those ceremonies in front of us tonight and to be able to appreciate everyone. So thank you, and that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Ayers?
I'd like to also congratulate Dan on his award from the chamber, so it was well-deserved, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis?
Became articulated better than Councilman Blakesley, but I can tell you, I was truly humbled tonight and by both avenues of service, our military and certainly our police officers, and I found it very touching and I was quite proud. Thank you.
Thank you. And not to repeat what everyone said, but I also have a fond appreciation for Commander Jerry Ferris and the presentation that he did for us here, here this evening. And also, as the others have said, like to congratulate Officer Kleimer and Matlock on their heroic efforts. It's much appreciated, and I think it's just a testament to the leadership that we have here and our first responders and their dedication to providing the best possible service that they can for our community. That's the extent of my comments, so I need a motion to enter executive session per Mr. Went's request.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Folick. Call the roll.
I'm sorry, I was trying to get exactly what the motion was, who, who made it and who seconded. I'm sorry. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0.